This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so we came out of the executive session at 5:46. I have number four, the consideration of appointment of city administrator Pope Town.
I move to direct staff to inter negotiations with Don Hope or potential.
At midstep.
At midstep.
Second half.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Any more discussion on that? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Counselor Valisis?
Yes.
Counselor Tate?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Webb?
Well, yes.
And Counselor Pogwad?
Timmy.
Okay, moving on to number five. I don't know if we can get through this in 15 minutes.
I would make a motion on resolution 2023 dash zero five to not... My motion would be not to adopt that. The well portion was it. Pardon me? So my motion is not to adopt the well portion of 2023 dash zero five. I'm not talking about the hard surface clean portion. Yeah.
I'll second that.
I would like to ask you, Tim, are you saying you don't want to pass this ever? Or are you saying you want to bring this up at a later date? Because I think there's some of-
Well, my motion is to just not adopt this resolution currently. And then I guess we can get into discussion. We have a first and second. We get into discussion now.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
So you're starting.
Yeah, I'm starting this discussion. I'm asking is to clarify what your-
My discussion is the city of Fort Orford has nothing written that prohibits wells in the city of Fort Orford. There are several people that have wells in the city of Fort Orford. They've had wells for years and years and years. The Landmark has a well that they use. I have a well that I personally put in, and I don't think we should punish people for having wells. Now, I understand that a lot of people think that we are only allowing wells because we have a moratorium on water hookups. That's not the case. There's been wells in Fort Orford for years and years. So that's why I made my motion. Basically, I don't agree with telling somebody they can't use their well because it does cost about $15,000 to put a well in.
Well, I think that we do have in the subdivision code very specifically, it says you have to be hooked up to city water.
Okay, and this is in a subdivision, that might be the case, but-
I also would like to know, are you aware of how many wells we actually have in the city of Fort Orford at this time?
I haven't listed a well on lately, but there are several wells in Fort Orford.
So I actually, I'm of the different opinion of you, Tim. I'm worried that if we start letting everybody go with wells, that we're going to lose people on our city water system. And this is like the case where, you know, you can't just say, oh, none of us have kids in school. I don't want to pay taxes for school. We got to like figure out a way to support our city water system. I did go and do the research today to figure out how many wells we have in our city limits. And I also talked to like some guy at Oregon Health Department to say, is this a problem? He said, well, how many do you have? And I said, oh, probably a dozen or two. He said, well, as long as you're not getting, if it's over 100, then it could be a problem. So I looked at the number today, and we have 80 wells, 70 of which are domestic already in our water system. So that means we have, I don't know if those are people who are like have it for their gardens and they're hooked up. But I don't know if you noticed in this report that Gary put out, he said that if we want to do bond funding, that it may be important for us to show that we actually have people in our city hooked up to our water system. If we're having like, I mean, we have 700 households and 70 of them are having wells. Like 10% or 10% of our city may or may not be hooked up. I don't, I don't know if they are. I wasn't able to get that information. That's potentially a problem, I think, for our long term.
And that is where I was going to follow up with Ann is that in my experience, a lot of times those wells are supplemental. Because when you sell a house, or when you're renting a house, or when you're at a vacation rental, like you're not, like you can't run off a well. You can't do a lot of things with a well. You can't, you know what I mean? And so it might not tax us as much. The other thing is, like, if our water source is in a different spot. And the one thing I can't, I know, I don't know 100% that I should is, I mean, that is part of the function of a water master. The water master is to see if that spot is okay for a well. Or, but I know also too, that you get instances where that last well affects everybody. And the way our water table works, that is realistic.
Well, everybody gets a domestic, everybody with the water, the way water law works, everybody gets a domestic well no matter what. You have that amount. I mean, if you have a house and you want to put in a well, I think you can put it in outside like of a city. But cities often will say you have to be hooked up even if you're going to have a well separately because of the purpose of needing to support.
Well, I think that's the kernel of this conversation is that word right there. Yes. Is, are we saying you can't have a well or that you need to be hooked up to the city water system? Because you could functionally do both. And that's the experience I have. It's a lot of people, you know, probably 12 or 13 of these wells have been there for 50 years or got built out or this or that. And they're still on the well log through the last row. Imagine, I have a well on the well log from like the 1880s or 90s. Right. For my house, you know, so it's still parked on there.
The other thing is, is we talked about, Tim, earlier, is that there is a commercial versus the domestic. And, you know, if we have, so.
So I think, I think the reason I went with my motion is there were people that have had their wells for whatever reasons. I come up with like three reasons. One was when the city brought the water system on. I understand our property, for instance, had a well at one time. And when the city brought the services in, they finally talked them in to hooking up to their... So some of those 70 or 80 are going to be folks that never hooked up, never wanted to hook up for whatever reason. Who knows what the SDC charges were back then? They were probably very minimal, would be my guess. Now they're quite expensive. I don't know if some of these people today, they're having to hook up just to get water billed. We know that because of the moratorium. And then some of the people have wells. So I've been convinced, I was going to get a well years and years ago, and I held off on it. And, but I have been convinced in the last couple of years by our public works department, saying that we are in dire straits. So being a businessman like I am, I'm going to buy a well. And that's what I did to make sure that I have water in the future. So there's a lot of different reasons. I want to be able to afford water in the future, and I want to be able to have water in the future. Because, you know, there's things that could be put in place that could make it unaffordable for me to buy water from the city. Then what would happen is I would have to sell my property, and who would buy mine, my property? It would be an investment company. They would come in, buy my property, raise rents $300, and that's how it would work.
Well, I think there could be a difference, Tim, of domestic versus the commercial situation, which is what you're in.
I like the-
But the other piece of this is that there's a very technical thing about what has to get written on a plaque. And I was at a meeting last week where I had a brief conversation with Crystal about this. And she explained to me that, you know, we have been doing it kind of in a way that may not be right. Because the things that's getting written on the plaque, we have to make notes, and we have to keep records and all that kind of stuff. So there, there's more clarity that has to happen.
So I like, I like that, and I like what you're saying. What I don't like is that planning has taken this up on their own. I don't remember ever even speaking about this in a city council meeting in the last five years. But planning has taken this up on their own, and they've come up with recommendations. They're right here, the recommendations, one, two, three, when city council didn't even ask them to do it. One, that's one complaint I have. The second complaint would be, I spoke with our city attorney, and she said this is a decision for city council because it's about money.
Was it allowed to? I mean, you're allowed to take on the plan. You can take on anything you want to do.
Sure, they could take it off.
But it makes you wonder why.
Exactly.
The reason why is because they had some decision this week apparently that had to do, Crystal explained to me that they were going to have to be some decision that has to do with some partition, and it had to do with water. And so the whole thing hinged upon, we don't have clarity. And so that's why somehow it came up in there. I didn't get into any details, but just that's why it came up for them. And so that's why, that's why we're being asked to look at it, to get to some clarity.
They didn't ask us to look at it. They made, they made, somebody made a resolution. Somebody made a resolution 2023 dash zero five. That's my only question is, I don't recall asking them. And then who made, who did this resolution?
Gary.
We shouldn't be denied building permits because people are allowed to put wells in. We weren't supposed to be. We solved this over a year ago. We gave, so over a year ago, two years ago, in this council chamber, we told the people in planning that people can't put a well in and build. Now, they can't build and hook up to the water system because we have a moratorium in place. But they can legally put a well in. You've been legally able to put a well in in Fort Orford ever.
But some of these plaques that were approved before say that they have to be on a city water system. And some of them, like if you're doing a subdivision, like over at Talis or other things, it specifically says you have to be, have a city water hookup. So there is, I know you're saying that you can always do a well, but it's not clear in our code. And so this is why it's ambiguous. Ann, I think we have to, I think we have to think this through because we could have 20 new people hook up next year and have them all be on wells, and then we're going to lose all those people to our water system forever. I mean, maybe we have to think about grandfathering existing people in or something. I mean, if we're going down this path of everybody's just going to do wells, then it's like each shirt your own. Well, let's get rid of our police department. Let's get rid of our everything, and just everybody does their own thing. I mean, we have to think about community.
It's one of the problems. We need to lift our moratorium.
Yeah.
And take a chance on our water supply. We've paid it all these years. Or allow people to do wells, or put a moratorium in that says you can't build no matter what, I guess. I don't, I don't know. I'm just going by what our current code is.
And I, why is it, why are we talking that, like, it has to be this, like, a well or a water system? Like, it's-
These wells are going to come in handy if the city of Fort Orford has a water problem. Or if there's a tsunami, there's going to, people are going to be coming to these wells and asking for water. And my guess is people will be sharing water.
But then how do we know that 14 of those 18 places aren't hooked up to city water still?
Well, I'm hooked up to city water. I'm hooked up to city water.
Right, and I think a lot, like, any house that's got sold in the last five or 10 years is most likely hooked up to city water if they got a well. Because it's 100 times more sellable if you're hooked up. And that's only from the experience of a bunch of people in the sea that, you know, adding a well for years. And be like, oh, I'm trying to sell the place. I gotta get, they say, I gotta be hooked up to the water. You know, spend the $15,000 to make an extra 30 for the sale type of thing.
So I've just, I've just pulled up our city code in regards to subdivisions, tentative plans, and plaques. Now, mind you, I'm just looking at this right here in this meeting. What our code says is if this is required for a tentative plan or a subdivision, it says a description of the proposed method, if any, of supplying domestic water to the proposed lots. If the proposed method involves the creation or extension of a community water supply system, a state of the system that they can and will supply water to the proposed subdivision if all requirements are met. A subdivision plan could be approved with a description that says that domestic water will be by well.
Really? Gosh, I read something that said, I could have sworn I looked it up, but-
And it could be, I'm literally looking up the code online.
You're going to say domestic water and well in the same sentence?
Yeah. I swear, I looked up because I was reading through it, and there were some things that you have to be hooked up. Because I was trying to look into this for the Talis thing. So there must be somewhere else in that.
I mean, that's not to say that there's not another section of approval. That's something different.
Yeah.
Anyway, I was a little disappointed that we received this today at 9:02 on, you know, for a workshop. And this is obviously a long, long, long discussion. And that's why I made my motion the way I made it.
Did you get a second on that, Tim?
Oh, yeah.
It is, okay. I, if you guys would consider back now that, I would move table. And so that we can take a look at this thing.
Well, I'm not sure. We can obviously take a look at it.
Well, I just, like, usually when someone gives me something at 9 o'clock in the morning, I wouldn't, I wouldn't consider it. It's just that-
Well, that's kind of where I'm at right now. I think Ann's got some good ideas.
I think it's great. I think it's great. And I just, I just, excuse me.
So, so I don't encourage Joseph to move the bus. He made a mistake, a solemn mistake. He's awesome. But yes, he did not get our, we didn't get our package until 9:02, which is what I received right today. I did get it a few minutes earlier from Ann, which got it off of the-
I got it off the website.
You got it off the website.
But I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus because it was an honest mistake. I hate that I even have to talk about it. But I also don't like getting this kind of stuff or any kind of stuff the day of the meeting. Because-
So do we have to rescind?
I'll rescind my second.
Okay, so I will, I will pull my motion, but I will motion to table. Okay? But this, in my opinion, unless there's some kind of big subdivision coming in that's going to put a well in, this doesn't get to go to the top of the list because we've got budget, we've got audit, we've got, we've got contract negotiations with the union, we've got a police levy. This doesn't get to come to the top because planning said it does.
Well, I don't think it's that planning said it was. I think it's what Gary said, which is there are people who are coming and banging down the door and who are angry, right, that want clarification.
All the things, I have recognition with planning here. That's why I say, because planning said so. That's all I'm saying.
So we take a look?
People should be able to build using a well at this point. We missed the boat as a city. It's the way it is. I mean, I, everybody had a well at one point, then they put in the water treatment plant. And we can't keep up with the water. And some people stayed on their well probably at the time. Right. And then a lot of people hooked up. Nothing was written in the ordinance to change that. So I don't see why somebody can't put a well in and get building them. It's going to take them two years to get a well.
And the water system was put in, I think they said the loop was hooked up in the late 70s or early 80s. So we're talking 13 years?
Crystal is the one who raised this with me. I mean, when I was at that meeting, she said, we're having this thing come up. The city has been doing things, you know, not kosher, whatever that word is, and that we need clarity. That's what she told me. So it's not coming from, Tim, I think you have, you have this feeling that the planning commission is doing things wrong. I think they were responding to Crystal saying, we got to like clarify this. And I think we have a planning commission right now that's interested in doing research and saying, we want to help these. So I don't think that it's a-
So, so how can you come up with these recommendations? How many meetings did they have on this topic? One meeting on this topic, and they come up with these recommendations? If and when city water service is available, property owners should be required to have city hookups to utilize city water service. The use of a well will be an alternate means of water supply for new development during the time the city water is not available. It even goes further in this resolution to say that people would have to hook into the city water system within 24 months if we were able to miraculously fix our problem, which we're not going to be able to fix for years and years and years to come.
The resolution is written by Gary, and a lot of cities do that, Tim. It's not like the planning commission wrote that resolution. Gary wrote it with the idea of coming up with a good fix for us based on his knowledge.
Well, Ann, I, Ann, I do see where our code further says that in a different section.
It's in EUDs or something?
No, it's in 1620-020, approval of five plaques. But I, I think that there is another interpretation than the requirement. I, I'm not so sure with the interpretation, like, you can't sign off as correct.
And we're kind of in a situation where effective is working against us on this particular thing. Like, this is kind of, you know, like, the administrator should write a resolution or a proposal or whatever to start the conversation. He just got convoluted, you know, in the process.
I wish I was blindsided by this.
No, and I totally understand. And we learned that in the meeting that, you know, we-
At 9:02.
Exactly. And so there's the, there's the rub, but we all know that we want to-
Well, I pulled my motion.
You get to move your motion. Oh, we had to add a motion to table as well.
Correct.
Okay, sorry, I was talking about-
Maybe we have, if we invite the chair, if he's going to explain to us why.
But again, the top priority of these next three hours.
So I hit that point, but if, this is why you have active commissions. And so that they can't come in and give us a five-minute blurb on why this is the right way to do it. And we don't have to do a bunch of research. That's actually a functioning commission.
So I would be happier if they came in and said, look, we need to grandfather in folks that have a well like they're doing with SDRs. Do you see what I'm saying?
No, maybe that's the one sentence you need to add to it.
Right. Exactly. I'm not saying we can't get there. We won't get there. I'm just saying that at 9 o'clock in the morning on a day that we have a meeting to find out this kind of stuff and have to be jumping through hoops, it's, it's just aggravated. It wouldn't matter if it was this topic or any other topic because we hate getting stuff on the day of the meeting. That's why we made a resolution years ago to get our packets on a certain day, which we do get them now. We've got the whole weekend to look them over, plus Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
That's the word timer for it.
Right. And I, and this might not be our highest priority, but it's a big priority. And that's why I got, you know, the whole thing as a whole, we got to cut on the wells, but this is a big thing. And it's to protect our staff. And so people aren't going in there hotter than heck because they don't know what they can do for their water source. Even if it's a no, you can't do that anymore, at least staff has a way.
And then hearing different things, or is it by the clarity? We need to just get clear at each time for us and whatever way we make the decision. And that way, everybody will know it's a fair, and everybody knows what the deal is, and we can communicate.
And for the next two weeks, the staff has the ability to say that issue is up for discussion, and we'll know more after the next meeting if it's on the agenda. So there was a motion to table, though?
Yep.
Okay. So I'll call for the question on that. Gary?
Yes.
Counselor Tate?
Yes.
Counselor Valisis?
Yeah.
Counselor Pogwad?
Stunna.
And Counselor Webb?
Well, yeah.
Okay. So that, like I say, we're not long-term tabling that, I don't think. Because it's about development, and we can't, like, we obviously have a bad reputation right now, and we can't help it because of the water moratorium.
By the way, this is all the council, you know, and I know you know, but sometimes we forget. Just because we set a policy doesn't mean that policy can't be changed.
Yeah, that's true.
So, I mean, we could set the best policy in the world as a council for four years. The next council could come in and reverse everything we've done. And we can reverse stuff we've done as we find out we've done it wrong too, and we have done that. So anyway, that kind of answered your question that, no, it's not really forever. But, but it was my motion at the time. So I would make a motion to adopt the use permits for cleaning hard surfaces. Because I think this is a pass that we can get through at the end.
Right, yeah, I'll second that.
Yeah, can we put this book on?
Yeah.
We directed staff last time to bring us-
The permit?
Yep.
And it's in there.
And it's in there, yeah.
So this is the second half that I split off.
We did motion with Peter Law, 2023, excluding the provision heading that says wells.
Well, 20, yeah, 2023 dash zero five really should be another number, in my opinion. Like, 06.
That's-
I can call it 06, and this picks it.
You just jank it out there, and you just draw that line out there?
Yeah. Well, there were, there are two, really two motions.
And he's going to be convinced.
He was suggesting motions. There's one that's just for the hard, the hard surface.
I'm not putting my notes, and I'm trying to keep up on my little phone here.
Could you be a lot easier to just adopt the permit for cleaning hard surfaces with the suggestions Gary just mentioned? And that's not a very good motion.
Well, but I mean, we-
I know what you're hearing.
I haven't watched more work on any one, but we could also redraft it with just the language, you know, without wells, and get that adopted at the next meeting and for the next two weeks when people come in and say, can I do this hard surface cleaning?
And we, so I didn't get the temps to do this, like I want to do. And I'm frustrated with that too. Because I thought it was important, but we really need to kind of lay out-
It's a part of the executive session. Can you put in this audio video thing as part of, like, what is it happening for the different examples?
I don't get the situation sorted out by next week, to be honest.
Look, you, you see what I'm saying here? Since we didn't get through it tonight.
I don't know why this is happening.
Because the reason you couldn't find the budget, I don't know. Joseph was handling that earlier today.
Yeah.
So that's what I meant. Right, right. No, that was part of the thing, and I was wondering how many. Are we going to issue?
Guys, I'm letting things go. I'm letting-
And is it going to be a lottery, or will it be like this?
We're having conversations between all of us right now. There is a motion on the table to retable this, right? But then you-
Why do you rescind that motion and then that whole, this whole 2023 dash 05 to me future?
I don't think we're ready on that.
Okay.
I don't think, I-
So did you get a second on your motion?
I believe so.
On the hard surface, I think you might have. Who made that second?
Okay, so I rescind my motion.
Okay, and Gary rescinded it. So we're back to a table status.
That's a good idea. We want to be sure we get the stuff right.
Okay.
Just leave it the way it is.
So I've already tabled, but I did say I'd split it up, put the well up. So just on the second, you didn't, you didn't split it. Yeah. So I make a motion to table 20-
You know what? I think we could just kill it. I don't think you have to make a motion to nothing. Be close to me. Without a motion, it's very common.
There's no second.
Yeah, no. So we're going to, the agenda, because we went lobby in parks, it's kind of-
Palms is, uh, Parks has, we have a forum. We have three people.
So, right, you can just die on the floor, and then we can come back with something that-
Well, yeah, right now, but yeah, table.
Well, no, we didn't vote on it.
No, we voted to table the whole resolution, and then Tim moved to pick the hard surface part out.
So it's handled, so it's handled.
It's, yes, yes. So the next part would be the workshop council agenda preparation, but we are getting close to, I mean, it's 6:15. I don't know how much longer we want to go.
Well, I just feel as though we have the opportunity to talk to Gary, who's put some thought into it, having ideas for us. And we may not have enough. This is such a special, important time that we have to tap his expertise, so I would love to-
Yeah, Parks is going to the meeting, so take a quick bathroom break or something, then sit down later.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
And there's one more of these, if anybody needs one more, a little, pick me up.
And that's the perfect example of what we're picking up against, you know, is that if that information is last minute, it becomes a real problem for the, the discussion, or at least now. Right, right, so.
And I'm, I did, it was an honest mistake. No, he did. He posted it to the, to the website a long time, several days ago, but he just forgot, honestly forgot, to get to us, right?
Oh, I just walked in with the context.
We were talking about getting-
The package for the meeting?
Yes, last minute. We, we, as a council, it just- Yes, last minute. We, we, as a council, it just creates problems for us, basically. And I just basically said I didn't want to throw you under the bus.
Yeah.
And, but I also had to, you know, out of my displeasure of getting stuff last minute. Not blaming you, I understand it was an honest mistake, so please.
Yeah, I actually already have it written on my calendar all the time for.
Okay.
When I took the email. Yeah, we know it was honest. The reason it had to even be brought up.
Oh, wait, we're not in a session right now.
We were talking about that issue and that was the problem. And so we, we got it this morning and we don't really feel comfortable getting the information. And chances are it would have been hard to get through anyways, but that's, that's why it even got brought up, so.
I would try, try to do less to like, like, just, I guess, ruin the critique. I don't know, try to do that. But, but I will, any, yeah, anytime I get information on, on, on something significant the day of, I will vote against it every single time because it's not like, like, I gotta be thorough. Maybe I'm not as sharp as some of the rest of the councillors here, but I can't do it.
I shouldn't do it either.
Have you made that so well before?
Yes.
And even worse than that is when somebody walks in, starts putting stuff like that.
Well, you know what? The other thing was, is that's a really good way to manipulate things and that's, that's where I come from. It's been, it's been weaponized. And you didn't weaponize it, oh, clearly, but it has been weaponized in the past and that is something that I'm keen to, that type of manipulation. And I just can't stand it. One other thing, though, I guess if we're going to talk about is when, when you're doing your stuff to get it out on Friday to us.
Yeah.
If it's not in Friday, don't send it out to us on Monday. Don't send it Tuesday, Wednesday. I mean, that, because now I've got seven of these things. And the deadline is, there's a reason there's a deadline, and we do it for a reason. It's a hard deadline.
I appreciate that because we did, yeah, I appreciate that because the reason we want it on that day is what happened years ago. We used to get our packets on Tuesday before Thursday meetings. Well, some people didn't even look at their, didn't even look at their email on a Tuesday. Maybe they forgot on Wednesday. And Thursday, they're looking at their email, oh my gosh, I gotta get ready for this meeting. Nobody can be prepared for a meeting by getting stuff the day of or two days before a meeting. So without a resolution to make sure that it was ready for us on Friday, so we could have the weekend, because that's when a lot of us will maybe sit down and put some grain in or something and take a look at it. I always remind them the weekend. Then I read it usually more than once on Thursday weekend. So, but anyway.
And I feel guilty of it too. I completely forgot.
Please understand that I'm not here mad at you because I'm not.
You're doing a great job.
Yeah, you're doing a great job. Thank you.
I just, you have two more quick things to say about this, if it's okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
One, one of the work, upgrade we're working on on the website right now will be basically the subscriptions. That way all the councillors will be getting it as soon as it's updated and on the website. So that one will be going away when the website is finished. And then I understand the not wanting multiple new things. I believe I only did it for stuff that was being entered in relation to the public hearing that was going in, in which case the people can provide testimony before it's available up until noon of, they can provide written testimony, I believe, up until a day or two days before, and they can provide, say they're going to provide verbal testimony up until noon of that day.
You were correct.
And that, also, speaking of that, that time, you sent us some, but I didn't get all of it. So when we got to the meeting and I heard that there were like twelve more letters of testimony that I had never received. And so that was kind of sketchy to me, like, that all these people put in testimony that.
There could be a deadline for written testimony. It could be Friday too.
Yeah.
If they want to come in to.
Well, I think there's different rules of regulation on the land usage issue.
Oh.
But, yeah, yeah.
That's one exception.
Like, there are, there are specifics that I am certainly unaware of. I just need as much time as I can, you know, to, and again, like you said, you're doing a fabulous job. More, we're, stick on the paint with your performance.
And that's why we're trying though to get the system so that for you to be able to get that to us by Friday, that means we, the agenda has to be done. All this other stuff has to be done earlier. So that's what we all have to work on in the systems, which may be a good segue to get to Gary's telling us how to, what we need to do because.
Just gonna hand it over to him, because that's where the big, that's where it starts.
Okay, well, some suggestions I want to put in the meeting. One is, I, I hate to suggest money, but I think if you're going to have one council business meeting. And you have all of the activities, the activity level they can experience, I would urge you to consider having a business meeting. But then you have a workshop every two weeks in advance. And move all of your deals on the course to the workshop. So the new information that council members want to bring up, you can kind of start building a, you know, a workshop. And you don't spend time in business meeting, trying to work small documents, think through what you're trying to say. Have a lot of creation district at the council. So we're already on the log.
All right, go ahead.
If you can move all of that to workshops, it's a less formal situation. You can talk, you can talk more informally, the discussion, you can have a wonder within that. And you can use that time to kind of understand each other's views about it. Look at background information that councillors can have, uh, to interest if they're trying to pursue. The staff can, the staff can work the options and talk about what we think of this. What we think of this. And then how would that discussion, the staff can create either direction here. Direction for you to direct from that business. And if, um, if it was just, I think, maybe a lot to work on. Struggling to get the other people. That's really the topic here. I like that moving towards putting more items on the consent calendar. There are things that are in the budget that you really talked about, and now it's time to do the headless in those items. And I'm not sure if it's necessary to rehash why you started putting this in the budget. But I had a council meeting, I think this position on the consent calendar, sort of that's what minutes would go. That's where, uh, like, as a council, the council, the monthly initial report goes on the consent calendar. It's simply received. The licenses are possible in some calendar. Things that are of administrative nature tend not to be controversial.
Gary, can you turn the mic? Sorry.
Things that tend not to be controversial, that you talked about more. That are administrative in nature, you go on the consent calendar and have previous year time of to talk about the other items that need your attention. And have more beat to them. Items that perhaps are a consideration, discussion among the councillors on, once it gets there for a workshop on, on policy. But I, I think that, I think just to utilize this, uh, the hard surface washing, like. That came up at a council meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And then it, I, so, state play, so staff picked, uh, the next year's meeting, trying to, happened to be a special. But if you took that a different way, if you could bring that item up at a workshop, any discussion about both of these things. Maybe even talk some of the details of what the staff understand here for, what we're going to do. Have some interaction with the work supervisor at the workshop. And then we could come back to you with a resolution that technically reflects what we're going to do. And have a, uh, and they have a basic board in this. It's all been developed, utilized in the calendar. We've been, uh, really bad about that. I mean, we've been, we've been bad with our communication planning for years and forms and everything. Which is weird.
One thing.
Weekend rules.
I think this example of what Gary has just shown us shows us how well things can be done, but it really depends on having an administrator who is capable of picking up that ball and listening to different people and what the ends are, what the goals are, and being able to come back to us and say, here's what I suggest. And the fact that, I mean, on this simple thing, that we have the forms and everything well thought through, it's just, I mean, it's just amazing from us because we're not used to that. But I think it goes to show us how important it is to have a professional, you know.
So, that's not, I mean, six, six or a while we're used to that kind of, uh, venue. Do I have that as a meeting? But it's, it's, you know, open up the meeting to a full lot, especially. You'll see it happen. But you'll also see it impact, because when you get in long council meetings, people's attention diminishes. I mean, like, and here you're tired, and here are wanting to focus on major policy decisions. At ten o'clock. So it just, if you can, if your meeting's shorter, so you can focus the items on your regular council mission, that has items that you need to make a decision on tonight. And you thought this through at a workshop. It still needs to have some things tonight, but the biggest part of the schedule point is. We can now take our time and really consider this, these few items we have in the resource, rather than all those things. Looking at the council, here we work, difference somewhat from the one here in Los Angeles. We better have a subject matter, if recommended, is more, uh, effective, make arrangements. It's in many cases, we'll alter the arrangements. I think it's important, and the staff report, like, any minor financial impact on the recommended motion. In the case of items such as, uh, the A D of, once a night, identify where and what, the funding for that. And if it's not, this is your opportunity to pick a motion to take the layout of the reserve fund to pay for this item and amend the budget.
Right.
So that makes it a lot better for the auditors to track them. Because the auditors will come back and say, hey, uh, you spent six thousand dollars on a.
You owe a thousand dollars.
Where's that in the budget? Oh, that you, you have something in the budget. Well, if you're doing a amended budget, if you met the budget as you go along, you don't have to do the, with something like that. You've already taken care of it. I think gotten the policy. So the financial impact is important, that I, I think, that it's explained in the staff report so that the council knows, oh, this is what it's going to cost, long term, short term. It can be any number of, uh, organizations of what. The financial impact is not just how much you're spending, but what, what's the impact on our, our funding capacity. Uh, what's the impact on our operating costs? If we take the action, buy this equipment, not only is it going to cost two hundred thousand, but it's. This, this piece of equipment, but the estimated cost of maintaining it. And having an employee, a wife, is, is this. So that you're fully aware that when you're moving into buying a new piece of equipment, you're starting a program, that all of the passes. So that if you're, if you're building a group of, uh, building a group tiny house. Who pays for the land, who's going to manage it, what's the, what's the maintenance costs, what's the liability costs? All of this needs to be addressed, and the plan is impacted. Then look back on the schedule part and staff report. This is all my formal education journalism. And this is the who, what, when, where, I am now, of the, uh, of the staff. We tell the story. Why are we doing this? How are we doing this? Who's doing it? How, you know, who, what, what is it that we're doing? What's the battery? Why is this here? Is it something that's a general plan? Is it something that's a budget? Is it something that came up from a commitment? Something that the city council, the staff was to come back with? Why is it on the agenda? What is, what is the thing he wants to do? What is the, why are we doing it? When does this need to happen? Is it need to happen now, six months, when we come back and talk about it further? When is this something going to happen? How? Who's going to carry out the record? Is the, uh, is the, uh. If that had, would be, and we can see supplies so we can, um, let the certified volunteers, so that you build the foot department, because you can contract it out. How is it going to be now? That, that all happens in this one set. I think it's important for you all to know, um, that level of detail about how this is going to happen. Then you do a, a level of, a way of having this, you know, uh, you don't necessarily, when you're dealing with like a big contract, put the entire contract in the packet. Which will be, I think, uh, sealed. You have to have some way of course. Or, you don't need to hold the plans and specifications for buildings. Doesn't need to happen. You have some way of. Maybe include a few plot plans or building design specifications that happen. Just don't, don't be all of that stuff to make policies. Just, just focus on what information you need to make the, the order of saving this before. And I just encourage you that when you're looking at plans for open or something, council meeting is not really the place to be, don't be too vigilant. Code this is, so. If you want to get into that level of detail, pick it up with the staff. Get your questions answered.
Okay.
That's kind of the council's agenda report. It, uh, it works, in my experience, has worked really well. For a while in Brookings, I was requiring the product director to sign off, and then I actually. Actually, there were some parts that aren't exactly skillful or dense. And then I, uh, for this workshop, I, I thought I'd share with you this, uh, city council look ahead. Uh, I developed an action. This is a document that is online. And it was reviewed every council, in the federal council. What we encountered in Ashland is that, in Ashland, there's 22 committees. Of all the active committees. And they have 350 employees. They have the partners mentioned, um, live band, T P. Live band service to all of the airports, golf courts. Just a number, the climate policy committee, the store representation committee. And, and these are folks that are very active and should have made recommendations within those specific things. Uh, and we had, it also adds, we have very active committees. Who, uh, just wanted to do a lot. Uh, and the major committee itself is kind of a lot. And we needed a, uh, method to kind of track what's happening. Because everybody wants their idea to be done. And, yeah. So, what, what you do is you scope out. Okay, we're going to get to your item. You're all good items. We have the staff are proposing that priority items are these. That the council may, you can change priorities, that's okay. But this document sets up the priorities, when we think it's going to be ready for the city council. Who's assigned to bring it all together. Uh, and, uh, even if it's not on the specific date, on the agenda. If we look at the last page, there's a bunch of stuff there that, uh, yeah, it's coming up. We'll get there. We just don't have the data yet because we, we're. But we're not, we're not forgetting about your research. It's coming up, we're working on it. But the whole strategy and based on the policy can get us to the work of this. And just services not overwhelming the staff, not overwhelming the folks. Trying to get all of this stuff, um, with the resource, the limited resources. And even Ashland, 350 employees is another. So that's why. And we also put out here, um, certain committees and commissions. Game for the city council to provide a report for. A plan commission and. Plan year retirement and annual report, these are all the things. This is all what we did. What's what, this is all. There were some external organizations in this area. We, we programmed it into the schedule of meetings. One that comes to mind here is the, uh, the report.
You believe.
Yeah, you believe. Uh, they got a lot of items that they want you to think about, that they got. Uh, and, uh, I get a prison. I get email, I get a lot of emails from them. When's it coming up? I want to get a, a answer on this. I get a thinking one, so. So, program them in your annual work. If, if, if they need, if they need a decision every March, put them on the agenda there. Don't have them have to remember the requests. Number vision is opening. Our, our, on the very last page of the actual. Let's see, our recurring events. These are folks that come back every year, multiple times a year, approach the council on issues that they want resolved. There are very, uh, there are common issues. That's, or, those are the items I've started. That you need along the way, I think, meetings, track what you're doing, all the people responsible for matters that are assigned to them and coming forward to the council. Not only the ones themselves, letting the commissioners know that you might forgot the information that you try and hone in. And make sure that, uh, you have the information you need to make a policy decision. And leave the, leave the detail of how to make the wish work. To the staff.
I think that if we could pull this off, it would be so helpful, Gary. And, um, I would just make the observation in the last five months, maybe six months that I've been on council, like, there are many times we had people come in and kind of hijack the whole thing because their issue had to be dealt with. And of course, we want to be responsive to citizens. But, you know, like what you were saying earlier, Tim, we've got big stuff we need to solve. And if we just always let whoever has a crisis come in and take over for a long time, it's, this would be a good way to help us.
But it would be, it would be something to work toward. But right now, it's just we've got the five items that are so important that we have to get done, and there's a timeline on them. And then we should work towards this because it would make everybody's job easier. And I mean, everybody. It would help citizens understand, it would help the commissions understand, it would help counselors understand, it would help staff understand. We all work like a double whaled machine.
Yeah.
But not for years.
To help us.
I can kind of have a piece of a lot of the situations we just had.
You know, one thing I noticed, though, when we would do workshops in the, in the four two, sometimes you lose steam and you can't, you can't do it. And, and I wonder, has anyone ever done a workshop with like a special meeting schedule and noticed a 15 minute special meeting, like, directly after that workshop? In other words, because sometimes you get, you get going on something. You get going on something like that and then, um, you lose it.
But, but it needs space from the workshop to the action. So that, so that the item can be fully headed. Maybe it needs to have a look by the new things. Maybe it needs to have a look by, by.
Sure.
Having fully headed and written in a manner of, uh, go, have it quickly, like, work the actions. So that it's more organized with the fact. I'm not just.
No, I did, I, I know that we've missed things because it was a workshop we haven't been able to do now, even though it was a body in particular. But it happened.
It happened.
It, it happened. You wish that you could vote right then because you said, you said the right three words. You, you said, uh, you know, accept this and that, and then I'm all in, you know, and everybody's all in. That's why I was wondering, I was wondering if it's ever been structured in such a manner. We, we would call it special meetings. We, we would have workshops at the four. All special meetings. Because then you can do that action. You know, I'm not, I'm not trying to, to counter your position. I, I agree, you know, completely. I just wondered if you could even, uh, you know, even make that better.
I guess my, what the way my brain wraps around it is it would be two weeks before the meeting, which isn't too long. And if you had, but if you had something that was pressing, that you, you were like, we need to make a vote on this right now, you could come out of that special session and notice a meeting for 24 hours to make. Oh, I'm not saying it's the clean way to do it, it's just the right way to do it.
You could. Schedule a special meeting. Right after the workshop. And if there's no meeting today, could you come in?
Yeah. Either way, it's all conversation, like, the, the backbone of this idea is pretty solid, I think. And if we need to tweak it a little bit for Ford Orford, I think that, like, the chain of events, I like that. I like the information gathering, I like the information sharing. It's what we're, we're always going to have our own angles of things that we do. But, but this is what we've been trying to look for as a backbone, get back to structure.
And, and we do our workshop, and then we go into two weeks, and something comes up.
Yep.
And we don't vote on, and then.
Then what?
You either go to a workshop again, where you can't do business.
Right.
And then with the next value meeting, now six weeks.
But this is.
But there's always something, there's.
That's the whole idea, though, there's always something, that's why you have a plan, knowing full well that's a.
This is the problem, everybody keeps dropping balls. It's quite, every meeting, we have this, this is what we were trying to do with the administrator saying, at the end of every meeting, there's this to do. And everything we say, it's got to be on the next agenda. And then we've got to make sure that it's, like, followed through. And that's, like, on all of us to pay attention to what we're doing instead of just, you know, showing up.
I think that you're going to be tickled peak working with a professional. And, and you have been, I think.
Yep.
And, and, um, there's just what you had to, what you were becoming familiar with was not an example of, of the way things should work. You know, Gary laid that out, it's, you know, a lot of us have. I just like to act, I hate not being able to vote on something when you got it figured out, you got it nailed, and that's why we went, and also why ended up getting investigated by the Methodist Commission. Because of the, uh, the, the title of, of the thing was why. It was supposed to be listed as a, a special meeting. The, the person that printed it out actually helped me with, um, workshop. And I didn't even notice, and I was the chairman of the board, and it was one year long investigation. It, it was previous, it was ridiculous. So, and that was just because of our desire to have these done.
But on the other hand, I, I understand exactly where you come from, but I can think of two examples in the past. You were involved in one of them. Remember when we were told how important and how much we had to vote on that telemetry system? We were forced that down. We had to do it that night, time was out, it hadn't been done.
You had to bring that up to.
Aren't we still dealing with that, like, eight years later or nine years later? And the same thing happened with the P L C tank. Uh, or not the P L C, the tank, the contact tank. I'm still not convinced today that we did the right thing on the contact tank. And we were forced that we had to do it. Remember that? Those are the two top things that come to my mind when people started pushing at Sam Ar. And it wasn't counselors, it was we were being pushed by staff and engineers at the time. And we made, in my opinion, at least one bad instance.
I know that contact tank, we talked about that for a while.
We did, but then we got to a point where I don't know, I know Pat wasn't satisfied, and I wasn't real satisfied. And still, to this day, I wonder if we made the right decision.
If you have engineers or vendors driving the conversation, you better pay attention.
Exactly. That's all I'm getting at.
And we always do this, guys. We always worry about these situations where, yeah, this might happen, we might have a workshop, and, and we can't make a decision. But we're talking like it's going to happen every single time and be super cumbersome. And I am not arguing whatsoever that these instances are going to come up, but just that we can't. We can't do it perfect, that's the whole reason to have a plan or a base.
Why can't, like, I'm not convinced that there's a good reason not to call it a special meeting.
I'm not saying that we can't talk about it more, I'm just saying we had a workshop and gave Gary the opportunity to present this to us. And now, now as the, the, the body, we make the decision on if we're going to take it up and how we're going to do that. So I'm not trying to deter your conversation of delving into these conversations.
Well, that's one of the special meetings.
No, I know, I'm just trying to say Gary has presented the structure of what he wanted to us, and we consider it broken off.
Well, I'm sure, I mean, I think what he's saying is Gary should.
Right. I was hoping, yeah. And that's what we're trying to say to each other, that's what we've been saying for six months.
That's what we said at the priority session, we really tried to set out some very specific things that were in that, you know, the documents that I ended up trying to write to put that together for us. I mean, we are still moving in that direction, we are a work in progress. But Tim, just to, like, fill in on what Gary had just said, can you imagine if, like, instead of every time we come to the meeting being like, oh my God, we got to do the police levy, oh my gosh, well, what about the C C C franchise? Are we forgetting this? And I'm like freaking out about the direction permit. Like, what if we had on the agenda, like, okay, the May meeting, we know we have to do these watershed, uh, resolutions for the watershed lands, but July meeting is where we're going to do the final, you know, language for the police levy. If we knew that was coming, then we wouldn't have to be, like, worrying about dropping the ball. It would just be, and it would help us to schedule and just know what we need to think about, too.
I think what's happened in the past, and Pat and I spoke about this a couple of weeks ago, the last six years, six and a half years have been absolutely a curve ball. We had four years of COVID. And then since Pat has taken over, it ended when I was the mayor, or started when I was the mayor, we, we did basically a staff turnover. We relaunched everybody. I mean, the only people that we kept were Dina, Kurt, and Wade. And Wade was kind of a new liar. Everybody else is new. And that is, I keep reminding Pat, when we talk about how we stumbled and how we got where we're at, a lot that has to do with that. We couldn't prepare for the staff turnover, it was almost worse than COVID.
Well, so now we have the opportunity.
We do, we have a great opportunity. And I will be studying those sheets and hopefully, if we're our town, which is, we don't have so many committees and stuff, we can, you know, streamline that a little bit and make it a little more dependable. You don't, you don't have as many committees, but you tell all the stuff. We did, absolutely.
And to be able, for staff to have the ability to tell people, you're on the list. You're not on the priority list, but we have you waiting here. And as you can see, we have all these, you know, pressing things right now. We'd love to get this list completed, but at least you're on it, you know. Because, uh, that's what makes me way to sleep at night, is we don't have the answers, then staff doesn't have the answers. Staff is the one that's sitting at the window with the angry people, so hopefully we can.
Well, I encourage you to take it up to a future work. And then play that. Your work, your, your city. I think for how long I'll deal with that. I'm confident as well. And then before you leave, you're looking like a.
Can I just say, to Gary, I just so appreciate giving you this, saying, giving us these tips. And, um, if you are, like, driving home or lying awake or ever think of any good ideas for us, please send them our way, and we've really, I just really appreciate it. And I think even him, you know, the example that he's given us, even describing, like, why we need to do things here, it's just so helpful. So, and your reports, your weekly reports, so thank you so, so much. You've really given us a lot to think about.
And I want to thank Gary for, for stepping in, helping us, um, in the time that you have. You really, well, had, and had much here left and.
Kind of what I didn't begin with.
I don't know, they came with a steer. Maybe we'll go with this for a while here.
I think about.
We're in the world here.
Well, I could, uh, contribute a little bit more. Speaking of contributing more, um, I would like to go talk about schedule. It's challenging putting this place together. Did you get the 22, 23 list? I will go home and I will dig through my stuff, I've been looking for, for almost 30 days.
I looked through mine, I, she said that, you know, I, I.
We didn't get a packet last year. We were told, I think I remember this, that it was going to get distributed to us at the meeting.
It's, it's not regular, my books are all at.
I know, I can't find one either.
No, it has copy of.
I can find every year for 10 years.
What about a budget message? Do you have that?
It's been vague, because he's been researching some stuff for me today. About the budget and.
He found three minutes worth of conversation, motherfucker.
Draft budget message.
Okay.
Yeah, it's vague. I'm gonna tell you, when I first talked with uh. Can you be talking? I first talked with Dina about uh. When you have a heated with you, 'cause you're, all this stuff you talked about earlier. When I first talked, when I first talked with Dina about helping put a budget together to. She's probably smarter than all of us. I had the finance director who banged them down, talked to her a little bit. And I think perhaps it's now less daunting. Uh, we're getting close, it's not gonna be pretty. Basically gonna take data from the current year, do some year-end projections, apply a multiplier, make some obvious corrections. I encourage your pleasure. There's still some unanswered questions about why is this here, or why isn't this here, or why is this here? But but I think I'm on my third invasion now of the draft, which I.
Wow.
Of the uh. Year-to-date, uh in projecting, year in, projecting, uh. And that I can build off of that with these six budgets.
Are you here tomorrow? Okay, if I could find that book, I would bring it down a little bit. I I thought, I thought we got finder, but it wasn't being labeled with a year or something.
You think it would have been sent electronically?
I mean, I know it was, I remember she didn't want to send it to us electronic, she didn't want to give it to a server.
Yeah, I I actually just looked in my old computer or my other computer, and I do have an electronic version, but she said the day before, oh, I can't give it to you until COVID's day.
So you do have one?
I just found it, yeah.
Okay, so if I can't find my book, I will call you tomorrow, and then you can print it and bring it or.
Yeah.
I think for email.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
Oh, okay.
No, two, three, four, five, 'cause I don't, I don't think I have it at all, eh?
Are yours to be expensed?
How's the year-to-date spending look? Um. Well, uh, there are two parts of that, one is year-to-date revenue.
Yeah, right.
Uh, and the other is year-to-date spend. So, year-to-date revenue was short last year. Uh, the biggest one is we're a hundred thousand dollars short on the second year. And we're short on water. Because of. Yep. That's a double-edged sword of curtail. We're not making movement. We're a little short on, I have to figure this out yet, and maybe we're just, I was optimistic, it could be, uh, on on projecting forward. Like, a little short on the public safety tax, but. So those are some. Some kind of short areas of the, on expenditures, there are over-expended line items. Uh, and under, and under-expended line items. You got two many line. Yeah, that was our complaint with with David, with Michael personally, with the way it was all. The first thing, the first thing we're gonna do, the first thing we're done for tomorrow's draft is, for example, on the employee section, we now, the budget has every employee, number separate line. Um, we're gonna collapse that into. Say, it wasn't halfway before, um, and and every, every uh employee benefit. The collection, we got, I think there were events on. Mistakes, maybe, and and assigning particular cost, we get so many of those line items, it's easy to forget about the worst. And there, and there's some other things like that. We got the insurance line item is over, and the workers' comp line item is ridiculous. So some of its coding is wrong in place. Uh, there are some expenditures there that were not counseled. Council approved, not. But. Correct, so we need to, we need to correct those, there's some line items, for example. There's a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget line item for water system. I don't know where that came from.
It's probably a carryover from the previous year when we did the.
The meters? A year-to-date, I'm here. Uh, John, this ability doesn't make it soon, but he also doesn't think it's four hundred and fifty thousand. But the other side of that is that you include a, you already borrowed a hundred, but still you lost.
We need to actually take a look at that, um, why not, why not, as a council and decide if we're plenty of time to uh.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, on the resource side, you're, you know, like tickets, hundred thousand off is is a lot, but it's easy to.
That happens.
It happens all the time on the revenue side, you you you're out invested, and and so you get over, it's okay if you have too much money, it's the expenditures that we have to worry about. And and I want to remind us that it's not line item by line item, it's the block of personnel services, it's the block of material services that we can't exceed ten percent. On those five big blocks, not line item by line item, if you can have one that's two hundred percent over here and and under there, or even if they're all over, as long as you don't go over that material and services, major block.
Correct.
You're okay. And that sounds like kind of where we're at right now, and if I was a betting person, I'd say that four hundred and twenty thousand was used for meters, or it got carried over from the previous year because of the contact tank. Like, I see it as you're building the budget, oh, we have four hundred and twenty thousand in that fund last year, which we know that it was for the contact tank, but it might have just got carried over into that cycle.
Contact tank, they've done it two years, though.
I don't know.
I'm confused about where, wouldn't it, if 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 she.
Uh, parallel.
We we're not certain to how that was, that number was.
Definitely.
The resources side of that, and if a person saw that, didn't know what it was for, uh, or it it could end up at at a carryover, right?
For sure, a hundred percent, a hundred percent, and it's pretty easy to miscategorize, too, I've been, you know, you know, a new person, you have a hundred lines, oh, is this material and services over here, or is this actually repair maintenance?
And it put me on to something, because it seemed like to me that we budgeted for some sewer plant repairs.
No, I haven't remembered what.
Remember, they were big numbers.
That was like the grid system.
Big numbers, and they could have got put in the water side somehow, which is not good.
Well, and to, to this, I know. Yeah, uh, you know, I was gonna, I was gonna process that as a budget, remember? Uh, but I saw the notes today. In in the notes, in Jessica's notes.
Yeah.
It talks about where this is funded. Uh, it's funded in a park. I have it, I have it sitting all the way up, so she says that we're gonna use a portion of the funding for community-centered uh tools. Repair maintenance for the community-centered American Legion Hall? Small tools for community-centered, small tools for another rain item, the water project, because we're just gonna charge you. That's odd, that wasn't part, I mean, when we discussed it, it was just a budget line item.
Yeah, exactly.
It was a budget line item for forty thousand dollar cap on a audio video and a camera system for a city hall.
It might be wrong, it might be more.
Yeah, it's just odd that she has that, in notes, has it in the parks department.
But we haven't expended that money yet, so in my opinion, we might consider just dropping that until this next budget, which is in two months. You know, rather than go through the amended budget section, can't we just not spend that? I know, that was the.
Got it fixed, I'm sound.
No, no, I know, I just didn't know we had already ordered, that was the.
Correction, we have not ordered, the invoice is in place, and it is ready for us to order if we want to, but we have not pulled the trigger to actually order the equipment yet.
So that is a consideration, just because of the timeline and maybe saving some staff time, uh, we can just build it into the next budget, put it cleanly on a line item. And I'm only saying that because we got two months left in the budget side.
I understand that, right? I I think it's, I I think we owe it to our our constituents to get this fixed as soon as possible. I I've been written six times tonight about.
No, I totally a hundred percent agree, I just meant timeline-wise, we can't screw that up, but Gary just said that he's gonna.
Yeah, I I've begged for it for nine months of the of this.
He has all the problem with the minutes and everything, back up.
Okay, good, yeah, we can do more, I'd like to know whether you, you want, you want to come up with.
Yeah.
No, it's not on a Friday, I won't be available, uh, this is another day next. I mean, I'll be available for the executive session, but I'm not gonna be here for three or four hours on Friday, 'cause we're another day next after, after the release. But I'm just, we are here to impose all of it. All of it is a scheduled meeting, that's what it is, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have to do it anytime before the eighteenth, because after the eighteenth, I'm just gonna be gone for a week and a half.
I can not do it Tuesday, Brett can't do Tuesday. I mean, good, we got to do a budget meeting.
We got budget meeting.
Well, yeah, last half of the budget meeting.
We got regular meeting, budget meeting, I mean, here.
No, uh, budget meetings next Tuesday, regular meetings the Tuesday after that, but we got a workshop for us Thursday, and then I think our regular meeting.
And we're getting into budget meetings. So I'm gonna get real.
It it like.
I could put together this graph, like a probability. So do you have past budget books in the office, you're dismissing last year's?
Yeah.
So, you you said we were potentially short on waters, you can go into the past budget books and look at how David raised the rates, he splits it commercial and. Uh, part of it on that high end, you know, that step in, and then part of it is a small amount on a rate increase, you can see how he does it. He basically just builds it into the budget, which didn't happen last year, and I. I can't remember the year before, but I remember specifically it didn't happen in the show, or even staff or last. Okay, so that could be.
That was on the.
Okay, yeah, because uh, the only time we did it, I would increase is when we produced.
We didn't have one in twenty-one, twenty-two, we didn't have any, like, rate increases. Well, I knew maybe, well, we didn't increase, because we were, and everything else, I I remember.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then last year, we didn't, but yes, that's.
Twenty twenty seven.
You don't have those books, I have books, and for this, the map and that.
Well, Gary, what do you need for a meeting with us, I mean, would it be so that you could present it to us, is that what the meeting would take, I mean?
I I was going to have, uh, like, I can send this out to you, and maybe that's why I can give you time to kind of go through it. What I'm, what I'm gonna do is uh, help the uh line items, and I'm going to have two sets of pipe items. Uh, one will be yellow, it says. Little ones. Got it, and one that is. Says make up. And then I'll have some little. Okay.
Would much prefer just a balanced budget.
Yeah, I I want to.
I figured I'd just throw that out there.
We just have so many problems that stem from this audio system and everything else, you know, with the, the notes and the minutes and everything else. And I've been saying, like, all this stuff you talked about earlier just a little bit ago, when you heard zero, that, literally, because you weren't talking into the mic like this, that's why we need that stuff.
So that's my question about this new audio system, are we, I mean, I'm sitting here, and you were talking, you guys are excellent, Anne's got the mic in her hand, Brett's back like I am, and and all of us. Everybody's away from the mics, we're not going back to a mic system, are we?
No, we have lapel mics, we have like, one attached, yeah, attached shirt. Uh, we still, we still will have these mics if we want to use like this, but we we bought lapel mics.
You guys, I'd like to go back to the budget discussion, because because um, this is another case where we we're not gonna have Gary for a long time, or we're not, we're only gonna have him for next week. So, I mean, I would really like to find a time to hear what he has to say, 'cause otherwise I feel like we're gonna drop, we're gonna miss the opportunity.
If you want me to deliver the balance. Well, that's what David used to always present to us, as a balanced budget.
Oh, you're saying, like, circumvent all of the work of marking things out for us and just presenting us with a balanced budget, putting it.
Is that going to be too difficult on you because of the past year and numbers being moved and those, I mean, you know the legalities on what can be moved out of what, which funds, and some you can't, you can't really move.
Yeah.
Do you know that, so we trust you?
Okay, the only thing I need some guidance on is assuming that we do have. Okay, I, I don't work. Okay, and uh, I'm trying to get you to help me with this.
Yeah, I think there's a little bit of merit to getting that, making brain life, just from the angle of us doing our due diligence in the situation that we're in right now. I would like to see line item by line item, you know what I mean?
I agree, let's do it Wednesday, then, so so you have a great idea, uh, we're getting ready to lose Gary, let's, can you have that ready by Wednesday, Gary, or is that too much pressure?
Well, that ends that, that's what I said.
Well, if we had a meeting Wednesday, we could sit over and go over it real quick and give you a little bit of guidance, if we need to, you may come out with something.
And before John could get ahead, if we do, John starts next week, right?
We should, I thought.
Well, John, would John be starting next week, right?
Well, what about, I mean, would you, would you consider, if everybody else could make it Friday, would you consider it if this is the only day that Gary, I mean? I know, but this is like an, well, I don't, maybe it's not an emergency, I'm just thinking this is our day of Gary.
Well, we're gonna be here Friday anyways because of the special.
Yeah.
Executive session. But we're gonna be.
If we're gonna do that early enough in the day, I will be there. Okay. When I say early enough in the day, three o'clock.
You're letting that for two days. One's the end of person.
I'm trying to help.
You're telling.
What do you guys wanna do?
I would say.
I think we need to meet Wednesday, we can meet with Gary, I agree with Anne one hundred percent.
Yeah, so that's why I would say, Gary, whatever, I mean, if it's easier for you to meet on Friday at three, and we talk about the budget, and then we have the executive session, I think we should do that. If it's not, I mean, I think I would, we should try to make that work for you, if that's the best thing.
So, make a decision and we'll go for it.
So three, five, Friday?
For the budget, and then followed by an executive session at four, four-thirty.
What's that?
And it's like Shalen mentioned earlier, it should be four-thirty to five o'clock thing, and it shouldn't take long.
Okay, so we gotta schedule for four, uh, three o'clock. Three?
Three.
Three.
Three o'clock Friday, four-thirty, we'll have the executive session, because we have to set it that time.
Write that down, this will make you get it. And that's this Friday. Tomorrow is a Friday.
Okay, I agree, it was Thursday.
Tomorrow we'll be starting.
I know.
It's gonna seem like it, but I don't know. I hope your tax goes better, by the way.
Well, I know, I know, I actually, uh, yeah, we're gonna go ahead and close this uh special session of the City Fort Orford County Council at seven, I don't know if there's a clock right there, seven forty-seven. Seven sixteen. Seven sixteen. Seven sixteen.
Hey, time.
Follow up with the I P group.
Yeah. Ryan, you're up.
I'm actually getting all.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, everybody. See you Friday at three o'clock. Yeah, that's right.